Call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Welcome to Janay School, to our board meeting. Here tonight. Mrs. Curtin will not be here tonight, and Mrs. Skamurski is on her way. So if everybody could please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Student Council. Ryan, Emma?
All right, thank you, and good evening. Emma will not be with us tonight. It is her birthday, so we let her have the night off. So last Saturday, Student Council members spread some cheer by bell ringing for Salvation Army outside of Walmart, and we also purchased gifts for families in need for adoptive family. A few other clubs at Columbia have been feeling generous in the holiday spirit. National Honor Society in the class of 2024 raised money last week to purchase gifts for adoptive family, and Ethnic Coalition and Student Council are teaming up so that students and staff will have the opportunity to make donations that will be used by Ethnic Coalition to purchase clothing items for families in local shelters. Finally, before students take a well-deserved break for the holidays, we will be having a spirit week next week. So Monday will be PJ Day, Tuesday will be Flannel Day, Wednesday will be Holiday Hat Day, and Thursday will be Ugly Sweater Day. And that is all I have for you tonight.
All right, thank you, Ryan, and tell Emma we wish her happy birthday.
I will, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, a lot of good stuff going on at Columbia. We really do appreciate all that you and the students are doing out there, so thank you. Great, next, Janay Elementary School, celebration of diversity, equity, inclusion, highlights of the ENL program, Mr. Grignan.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. I would like to welcome the Board of Education, community members, as well as our central, as well as other administrators in the district. Welcome to Janay Elementary School. We're very excited to have you here to highlight something that's really important, dear to our hearts, which is our English language learners here at Janay Elementary School. We're going to start off our presentation quickly by a quick little video for you to enjoy, welcoming you here to Janay.
My name is Mrs. Karaher, and I'm lucky enough to have connections all over the world because I work with the students here at Janay.
Families connected to Mexico.
Families connected to Haiti.
Hi, families connect to Bangladesh.
Our families connected to Thailand.
Hi, my name is this.
My family is from Burma.
Nossa familia de Brasil.
Hi, I'm Ms. Aldinger. I speak English. Do hablo español, and eu paro português.
My family is from Ecuador.
My family is from India.
My family is from Pakistan.
My family is from Sardinia.
From Japan.
From Afghanistan.
My family is from like this.
My family is from India.
My family has connections to Mexico.
What's that you've been from, Murphy? I come from Spain. We're from, we're from Sabir, Oktoberfest, Brezen, and the Schlesser von Kinne-Lübeck in Zweiten Bekan. Hello, and this is Murphy. I'm from Bavaria, that's Southern Germany, and we're most famous for the Oktoberfest, we're Brezen, and the castles of Ludwigshack.
From Japan.
Beige.
Texas.
I was born on Belarus.
I was born in Belgium.
I was born in Finland.
What does move is from.
Hey, only me on either end there, and I'm open to an England via the Janessa. More than rupees, that can always say, not worth it, yes, yeah, okay, in England here.
Hi, my name is Aida Marie Lindberg, and I teach English as a new language here at Janay. I moved to the States when I was seven from Sweden, and I speak Finnish at home.
All right. Yeah. So tonight's presentation is about ethnic diversity here at Janay Elementary School, and talking about how we, as the ENL cluster for the elementary level, are working with our ENL population, or as we affectionately call them, our L families, to provide the best level of services for them as we continue to support them and their families throughout Janay and throughout their career here at East Greenbush Central School District. I'd like to welcome up my ENL team as part of Janay. There we have four ENL teachers that help support all the students here at Janay, and I wanted to go through a little historical data so the Board of Education and families at home that are watching can see exactly how the historical data has shifted over the past several years. First, I wanted to say that currently, right now in the district, we have 131 students district-wide. This number has changed from when I submitted the Board of Education presentation, and I'll explain why a little in a few slides. We currently have 106 active ENL students. That includes our Level Fives, which we'll talk about later. Level Five means that those children have been identified to have strong English language abilities. But one thing that we will talk about is what that means is, once they test into Level Five, or commanding, as is called by New York State, they also retain two additional years of service beyond that Level Five earmark. We also have 25 former students in the district that have completely tested out of ENL. And as it's broken down by level, we currently have 69 identified students as Ls here at Janay Elementary School. We have 22 at the middle school, and we have a total of 15 at Columbia High School. Some historical data, just talking about staffing, how staffing has shifted over the past several years, is that back in 2011, 2012, the district made the commitment to better serve and to restructure how we are serving our ENL population. Because prior to that, we had students that were spread out between Janay, Red Mill, also all the way out in Belltop, and what we found was, is that over time, the service delivery model that we were putting together wasn't really meeting the needs of the kids because we were losing more instructional time, having our staff drive from one school to the next school. So the community, and with the support of education and the superintendent at the time, it was consolidated at Janay Elementary School because Janay was found to be the geographic center point for our district. So over the years, in 20, back in 2011, we had we had two full-time ENL teachers that worked K through 12. And then just recently, for this year, to show you the difference, we have now have six full-time ENL teachers that work K through 12. And that is in direct correlation to the response to how many ENL families have moved into the district so we can support them. It's also very important to also note for the Board of Education and for families at home that when a child tests into ENL, or when they're identified as an L student, it is a mandated service by New York State. It is not something that parent or that a family can opt out of those services. We have to, by law, provide the level of service depending on their identified level when they take a NICE at all and the NICE at slot. A little more data to show you is that you can see historically from this slide, the enrollment over the last several years has grown significantly. All the way back to '08, '09, we only had 29 students listed in our district as Ls. Over that time, we have seen a progression of moving, of families moving in, some families moving out. This data right here was taken on what's called Bed's Day, which is a snapshot of our enrollment in October, and those students are linked to our district moving forward. So you can see a little bit of fluctuation, but on this slide, you can also see that in 1920, when we had the COVID pandemic hit us, we did not assess any students during that time just because of guidance from the state, but you can see that we had 57 students eligible. The following year, we jumped up to 71, and currently, right now, we're at 104, you know, district-wide currently. So one, the one thing that's very important, and I can give you a little example of what we've been dealing with the past four days here at Janay, that enrollment is never static for our L families. Families will move, they become transient, they'll go between schools. Typically, we see a lot of movement between us and also Rensselaer City School District, but we also see families that are coming from Shenandoah, that they're also coming to us from Gilderlin. I bring up Gilderlin specifically because, over the past two days, we've had five new students move into our school. Out of those five students, three of them were identified as ENL. Two of them come to us already classified as L students. One of them is moving to us directly from Brazil. So we'll go through the process of how we identify those students in a couple other slides, and one of the L teams will take that on. But it's really important to understand that this slide is what will impact us moving forward because of the transit nature of some of our families, and they move and they go back and forth. Also, we see that our L families also tend to take vacations differently because they don't always follow the school calendar. And typically, when they do, they go back to their home country or to visit family for religious celebrations or holidays. And typically, they'll be gone for three to six weeks. Now, while that is not the most ideal for us as educators, because we want to make sure that we provide them a unfortunately, the parents will go and take them. And what we do is, at that point in time, we unenroll the students because they are leaving the country, and then we ask the families to re-enroll once they come back. So that is also a part of how the fluctuation may work, you know, on enrollment on any given day. As I mentioned, scheduling. For scheduling, a really important thing to note about ENL scheduling is that it's extremely difficult because our enrollment is so when we get our enrollment projections and we begin to work on our ENL schedules at the beginning of the school year, our L team puts it together based on the students that we know. And what we have seen is, is that we typically have students that move in and out of the district all the way from September, all the way through March and April, and then it starts to teeter off historically. And then we have families that will leave us in June to go back to their home countries, and then re-enroll back in September for that fluctuation period that we typically see. One of the things that I can tell you is that with the increasing enrollment trend that we are seeing, it is becoming more difficult for us to provide the same level of service that we have been because we typically will group the students into what are called ENL clusters in the school to provide the maximum amount of service that we can, which is typically broken into two different types. It's called the standalone service, which means that it's a pull-out service, and a push-in service, because New York State makes it very clear that they want us to provide L service inside certain content areas, most specifically ELA, to help that rich immersion in the English language. When we have students that our numbers are becoming so great, for example, we have an example of that happening right now in kindergarten here at Janay. We have 12 students in one class. That is almost creating what is called a self-contained type of environment, which is not ideal for language immersion. So we just had another kindergartner join us that we're planning for. So we're breaking that into another ENL cluster now at the second, or I'm sorry, at kindergarten level. What does that do for our Ls or for our L team? That means that they have to figure out how they can service another room at that time. And they've already made their schedule based on the current enrollment. So every time we change it, it affects our ability to maximize how we can service our students. And I have to say that the L team and I, we meet on a regular basis, and we discuss this on an ongoing on an ongoing basis as well. And with that, we also look at how can we be creative in clustering students, even if they are contiguous grade levels, such as a kindergarten, a first grader, if they're both a Level One and they fit together, we can pull them and make them one group. But we can't pull a fifth grader and a kindergartner that might be Level One because it's not in good practice to put a kindergartner and a fifth grader when they're already kind of, you know, learning the ropes of a new school, and putting them together might make one of the students, the fifth grader, being paced, being placed with the kindergartner. So we, so we take that into consideration when we make our groupings. I'm going to turn it over to one of our newest team members, Ms. Aldinger. She was hired this past year, and she's been, that's been a great addition, and she is going to take you through a little bit of the importance about family communication with our L families.
Thank you, Wayne. As you said, my name is Kelly Aldinger. This is my first year here at Janay, and I'm just really grateful to be a part of such a uniquely diverse district. Now, speaking of that diversity, you see here that our L families here at Janay alone represent over 20 different languages. And many of our families are multilingual, which means they speak more than one language, often including English. However, several of our families do not speak English, and that is why strategic communication is really crucial. So we know at an intellectual level that, you know, communicating with families in the language they can understand is the best practice and the right thing to do, but the question is, well, is it required? Well, if you look at the federal level in the ESSA document, all throughout that lengthy document, it is repeatedly shown, and this is just a sampling of those examples, that to the extent practicable, schools are expected to be communicating with families in their, a language they can understand in their language of choice. And likewise, at the state level, we see in the New York State Blueprint for English Language Learner or Multilingual Language Learner Success that the state expects that districts are, value and involve all parents and families regardless of their home language, and that we increase access dialogue and communication by providing information in a quote "language" and format that parents can easily understand. And yet again, in the Culturey Responsive Sustaining Education Framework from NICE ed., we see very similar language regarding providing families with opportunities to communicate in a language of their preference, as well as providing interpretation services in the family's home language. So no matter what angle we look at that from, it's very clear that communicating with families in the language they can understand is a very crucial and important step in creating an equitable education system. So you may be wondering, well, how do we communicate with all these families, especially since we have such a large number of different languages? I'm glad to ask, because here at Janay and across the district, we use a variety of different resources, including Lexiki, which is a service with headquarters actually right in Niskayuna for translations and interpretation services in over 90 different languages, as well as a similar service called Lingua Links, which provides on-demand interpreters in over 200 different languages. We use these two services primarily for official correspondences such as parent-teacher conferences or IEP meetings, but for everyday two-way communication with families, we utilize a free app called Talking Points in which I can send a message to a family in English, and they will receive it in the language of their choosing. Likewise, they can respond, let's say, in Spanish, type back to me in Spanish, and I will receive it in English. So this really reduces the language barrier. And furthermore, for families who aren't literate in their home language, the app offers a read-aloud function as well as a speech-to-text feature, so it eliminates that literacy gap as well. So it's a really comprehensive tool and free. We really do take pride in the diversity here at Janay of our L population, but also as a school as a whole. And we see the multilingualism represented here as a huge asset that provides endless opportunities to our families and our students. So I thank you for your time and attention. I'm going to pass it back to Wayne.
Thank you, Ms. Aldinger. So. Okay. So, sorry, we're missing slides, but I can talk about it. One of the slides, it was in the original presentation, was a slide about the technology that we have here currently at the district, and it's been an investment by the central office team, but also Mr. McHugh spearheading a lot of those conversations with Peter Goodwin, our Director of Technology. And those additional technology purchases, which are typical things that we have provided to all of our students and all of our teachers, things such as Classroom Suite, also NearPod, Kami, all these things that teachers got a lot of training in last year and the year before when we went into COVID because we were shut down, and we had to respond to that, and how could we effectively teach our students? Additionally, there were specific purchases that were made just for our Ls to help those families as well, and those things were such, were such as NearPod for ELLs, also Reading A to Z, which had an ENL component to it. And those things, and also Brain Pop Junior, which was also has an ENL component built into it as well. Those things helped us connect with our families and keep that language-rich environment for our families going, even during the COVID pandemic, to make sure that even though they were home and they were most likely speaking in their native language, they were also getting exposure to the English language, which is just as important, especially during the COVID-19, because we were worried about seeing regression in our students if they were immersed back in their native language and not practicing the skills of the English language. This next slide, I want to introduce another one of our ENL team, Mrs. Sabine Murphy, who's going to talk to you about what it looks like when they push in and how they support the classrooms through co-teaching models.
I want to thank you for your time, and also, I'm so glad to be here. And I just want to tell you too, I enjoy working with my students so much. But here's the co-teaching model. Number one is that one person teaches, the other one supports. Many times, we use this when our students are brand-new and don't really know any, have any English skills. And then we have the parallel teaching. We can differentiate with the whole class. We have some ENL students here, maybe here, depending on their level. And then we have the station teaching. It's when we have like multiple activities they can do. And then we have the team teaching, which is really great. So there are two teachers in front of the class, and we teach, and then we both check on all of the students, ENL and regular students in the classroom. And with the team teaching, it's also great because we're basically modeling collaboration, and that's what we expect our students to do in certain lessons. I also want to quote something from the U.S. Department of Education, and that reads, "In every, in an ever-changing, increasingly complex world, it's more important than ever that our nation's youth are prepared to bring knowledge and skills to solve problems, make sense of information, and know how to gather and evaluate evidence to make decisions. Enhancing such skills lies at the heart of STEM or STEAM education." And I use project-based learning in my STEAM education. So STEAM is an approach to education that empowers students to be curious learners, solve problems analytically and creatively. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, English, I squeezed the English in, Arts and Math. And the next slide will show how it works in a classroom. So for example, we did a bridge-building project with dry spaghetti. And first, I would set my students up with some vocabulary they need to know about a bridge, parts of a bridge. We learned about geometric shapes, the parts of a bridge, like, you know, deck, truss, foundation, span. And then we looked at the history of bridges and bridges. For example, we looked at the Golden Gate Bridge, the George Washington Bridge, Brooklyn Bridge, that was their favorite, Patrion Bridge. And then we also looked at the Tacoma Narrows Bridge, which is called Galloping Gertie because it collapsed during a strong windstorm. So there was one bridge that had a different design, and it didn't work. And then they had to figure out why that bridge collapsed, why it didn't work. They had to design their own bridges. They drew them out on paper first, and then on dry board. Then they had to tie their dried spaghetti together in like about nine-millimeter thickness, cut the pieces, and then glued them together. Usually, we would try to put some weights on it to see how much weight they can hold, but the kids didn't want to ruin the bridges, so I let them take it home. So what's really great here at Janay too is that our students, besides STEAM, they learn the CCC, which is cross-cultural communication. I have, the class I did this with, I had eight students, eight ENL students in there, and each student was from a different country. So all the students in the class and my ENL students very quickly learn how to use cross-cultural communication, communication and get to know each other. By acquiring cross-cultural communication skills, one will be able to express oneself with confidence by understanding and including and appreciating others who aren't from a similar background. So globalization happens on various levels, like trade, research, technology, and also in education. And another way to bring cross-cultural communication to every student in the classroom is with our World Wednesdays. And for this, I'm going to hand the microphone over to my colleague, Jaime.
Thank you, Sabine. My name is Aida Marie Lindberg, and I teach at Janay Elementary School and also at Gulf Middle School this year, since we've had more students come there. But I'm going to piggyback on what Sabine talked about. We, we have this thing called World Wednesdays, and this is done mainly in the, in the classrooms while we're team teaching with the classroom teachers. So global education really emphasizes that our children's success depends more than ever on their ability to communicate, have empathy, and work effectively across cultures. As the current pandemic shows us, our world is interconnected and interdependent. For today's children, who are tomorrow's leaders, solutions around health, natural resources, and the environment will be among the most urgent questions they will face. As big and elusive as these questions may be, the small steps we take at home and at school to launch meaningful connections with the wider world can make the most lasting impact. So at Janay, World Wednesday is a day specially dedicated each week in the classrooms to getting to know the world better through project-based learning. They involve, but are not limited to, the backgrounds of our students. They help all students become more knowledgeable about geography, climate, culture, and language. Students cultivate their curiosity about other parts of the world and open their eyes to their own classroom world. Often on Tuesday, Tuesdays, we'll hear students excitedly ask, what country will tomorrow be? So World Wednesdays give a voice to our students, especially our English language learners. A few snapshots of some of our memorable moments. A fifth grader with a Chinese background, this is, I think, in this picture, this is pre-COVID though, no masks. A fifth grader with a Chinese background as an expert helped teach kindergartners how to write and say numbers in Mandarin as part of a larger learning experience about China. A second grader from Belgium as an expert the song Brother John in French and led food bingo in French to the whole class during a country study of Belgium. A student from Japan taught his class how to fold origami animals as a class study Japan. Students with connections to India helped teach us about Diwali as we made Dhas and tried our best to dance the Diwali dance. Do you know where the Christmas tree originated from? Well, just today, Sabine Murphy and I taught about Germany and about the origins of the modern Christmas tree. Together as a class, we made huge collaborative trees. So these are some of the experiences that we hope leave a lasting impact on our students and encourage them to discover new interests in the world and imagine doing big things in it. Thank you for your time. It's been great to be here. And now let me introduce you to our colleague, Mrs. Jennifer Karaher, and she will give you another example of worldly connections here at Janay.
Thank you, Mrs. Lindberg. In addition to the technology offerings geared toward the unique learning styles of our English language learners and the project-based learning, we also like to incorporate authentic activities into our curriculum whenever possible. One example of that is our fifth-grade PENPAL project. Here, Janay's fifth-grade students are paired up with same-age students in South Korea, where they exchange letters each month. It's a great activity because the students enjoy sending and receiving letters, and it was set up with the help of one of our former ENL families here at Janay. As was mentioned in the video at the beginning of our presentation, many of our students have connections to other parts of the world. This project gives students in East Greenbush, who might not otherwise have an opportunity to make a global connection, that chance. So right about now, you may be wondering a little So right about now, you may be wondering a little bit about how we identify our English language learners. Upon entry into the district, the registrar asks all incoming families to complete a form called the Home Language Questionnaire, or the HLQ. Here, families indicate if a language other than English is spoken in their home. Now, it's very important to note that just because another language is spoken in the home, that does not mean that a student will require English as a new language instruction. This questionnaire lets us know that we need to do further investigating to better get to know the needs of this student. So I just talked about points one and two. After one, and usually one, sometimes two ENL teachers meet with a new student, we typically conduct an oral interview and then determine if the student should be administered the New York State Identification Test for English Language Learners, also called the NICEATEL. This test includes speaking, listening and for older students, reading and writing. The test results will help us better understand the English proficiency level of that child. There are five. As you can see by this chart, the amount of intensive English language instruction the student receives tapers off as students become more proficient. For example, if you look at the beginning level student, they would require 360 minutes of English language instruction per week. And of that 360 minutes, half of that time is given to the student in a small group environment, what is shown here as standalone. And the other half is considered our integrated instruction. So if you think back to the different teaching models Mrs. Murphy mentioned, that is when both the ENL teacher and the classroom teacher work together to provide all the students with the style of instruction they need. It's also important to note that when a student is at the entering level, we sometimes call this a level one, the integrated support they receive needs to happen during the English Language Arts block of instruction. While this is absolutely a best practice to provide ENL students with the kind of support they need, it can sometimes be difficult and challenging, as Mr. Grignan mentioned before, to schedule and accommodate all the different students throughout our entire school. One thing that's important is that once a student tests at the commanding proficiency level or level five, the student still gets two years of ENL instruction or 90 minutes per week. Luckily, there's a bit of flexibility with when the ENL teacher can provide that instruction. Here is an example of what a speaking question for a kindergarten student might look like. And I will read it since the print is very small. The script says, "Look at the two pictures. I see birds. Tell me about what the birds are doing in the picture." And the ENL teachers would then use a rubric to grade or score the student. One of the final things I wanted to mention to the board is how lucky I feel to be a part of the East Greenbush Central School District. While New York State has many mandates as it pertains to our English language learners, one new document is the New York State Blueprint for Success. Ms. Aldinger mentioned it before. And it's great to know that here at Janay and here in East Greenbush, we are already doing so many of the things we need to do. So before I hand it off to Mr. Grignan, I want to personally thank each of the board members and everyone here tonight because I'm so proud of your continued support as educators that we're able to provide all of our English language learners and our diverse population of students. Thank you. Mr. Grignan?
Thank you. So as we talked about, communication is key with our L families, just like it is with our non-L families. This slide just goes over a few of the things that in conjunction with school social workers and their importance that they also provide to our families, the L team behind me and across the district also provide additional connections to our families so they know what services may be available to them within the community. Some of the things that I've listed here are things that the people behind me have done with our families currently right here at Janay, such as providing cultural experiences that they may not normally get, setting up medical appointments, helping them to figure out that they can get medical services through our local county that are free, that some families do not know about. Also partnering with Albany Law. They have free services to people who cannot afford them. And those services, sometimes, you know, our families have trouble with, you know, unfortunately, you know, landlords are finding housing. Those services are available that will support them through that process. We also look at organization of transportation for appointments because some of our families that have also had, that we've arranged and paid for taxis for them to go pick them up. And a good and a big shout out also to Mark Knoweth, our Director of Transportation, who has worked with us on sending buses to pick up families and bring them to Janay and then shuttle them back to their houses, once we know that they have to be interviewed to see if they may be one of our students. Additionally, the most important thing that I find that I'm very grateful for, for the, for the four teachers behind me, is their openness to communication, not just with the classroom teachers, but also with administration, keeping us up to date as to what is going on in a particular family situation. Because every family, as we know, is different. And there may be certain challenges that they may be facing that maybe we can help and connect them with, with the support of Mr. Simons, Mrs. Wager, Mrs. Cannon and also especially Mr. McHugh, who works directly with our ENL teachers as well. I just want to go over a couple of successes and talk about a few things. So obviously, we have been through a lot these past three years. And, you know, we expected our students to, to bounce back and, and, and to do well. But we also noticed and we anticipated that there would be learning gaps that we had to address with our kids. And that goes to show just, just as much as our non-ENL students, but also our L students. But it's very interesting to see that from this data, the NICE slot, which is the assessment test that every L student takes in May and June, every year to assess their English language abilities, that last year's test, when we gave it, while it was only one day, typically it's multiple days, none of our students who are level one scored a level one, which is a huge success. We had, for example, a family, a little girl that was on the video, it was from Belarus and another boy from Finland, who both came to us during the pandemic, actually February, right before everything got shut down. And those students actually came in at level ones, they spoke no English. From then until now, I'm happy to say that with the support of the classroom teachers, related services, our L team, that those students and the support of their parents at home, those students both tested at a level four and a level five last year, which is tremendous growth that we look to see. Now, obviously, some students perform better on tests and that's, that's okay. But that is just what we're at. We're at student achievement, bolstering their confidence and their abilities and hopefully seeing that great gains that we would expect out of all of our students here in East Greenbush Central School District. So one of the things that I, that, you know, that I, that we anticipate that we need to have further conversations about is for future needs, is the look to potentially having, because of the growing population of our Ls, the static enrollment and making sure that we can provide the level of service that we're accustomed to, to our families, is that we foresee possibly having a conversation about engaging into creating two ENL cluster schools in the district at the elementary level. That would help us to better serve our populations. And also that would require that we would look at potentially hiring additional ENL staff, whether that be ENL teachers, maybe looking at potentially some teaching assistants that may be able to support the ENL teachers for, for our level ones or our level twos. Those are conversations that we should begin to engage in because those are things that we may have to look to in the future to better serve the population. It's also important to note something that I meant to mention before to you, is that our L families, they are very, they're a very close-knit community and they talk. So when we have a family that they move in and they realize the level of service that we're providing, they are talking to family members who might be in a neighboring district and they are having them come to us because they're very proud of what we're able to provide to their families. And that's a real feather in our cap because I can tell you, I have received multiple emails and phone calls from parents that are just so happy to be with us because of what we do for their children. And that's a feather in the cap for the Board of Education and the central administration team because it takes all of us to be able to provide that level of service to our, to our families. So in closing, you know, one of the things I want to make sure that we, that we realize is that we celebrate the growth. We celebrate the growth not just of our Ls, but we also celebrate the growth of all of our students. The Board of Education with your support, the central administration, Mr. Simons, and the foresight to also hire additional intervention specialists and all those other services that we have currently are truly making a difference in helping our students, both ELL and non-ENL families. And those kids are really reaping the benefits of, of the foresight and the planning of, of, of our, of our Board of Education and the central office team. So it is really important that we take a moment, even though we were in the midst of a pandemic and we had, and you know, and there may be bumps in the road that we may not anticipate, but that we will deal with as they come. But it's also important to stop and to celebrate the successes that we do currently have because that is important to also remember where we were, where we are and where we will continue to go as, as, as a greater school community. So at this time, I want to thank the Board of Education and Mr. Simons for the opportunity to welcome you here at Janay and to also share with you a little bit about what we do here at Janay. And I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Simons and answer any questions that the Board of Educate, that the Board of Education may have for us at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Excellent. I mean, I just learned a lot. So this is, this is wonderful and haven't been on the board for quite some time and seen how we used to do things and how we seen, you know, how we're doing things now is, is phenomenal. One question I have, and I, I didn't hear you, when you say the students are tested twice, what months?
So when we have a student that made, that we, from the Home Language Questionnaire, which is part of the identification process, they will receive what is called the NICEATEL, which is a language test to assess their English languages. That is only given one time for a student that we have concerns about that may be somebody that may test into ENL services. If they're already in L services, they do not get tested again. They're automatically part of the process. But with, but what every student that's in the ENL, I'm sorry, any student that's been identified as an ENL student gets assessed every May-June on one test, but it's broken into four parts, a speaking, a writing, a listening and reading, sorry, thank you, and a reading test. And they're assessed on those four categories as part of the New York State English Language Achievement Test for ENL students. In addition, our, our students in grades three and four and five also take the New York State Math, Science and also in their, in fourth grade, they take the science test as well.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions?
Congratulate you and commend you all on the work that you obviously do. Having had a foreign exchange student two years ago, living in my house, he was from China and came to us knowing like zero English. And it was a struggle that year. He did not attend East Greenbush, he attended a private school in Albany. And it really was hard to have just one child in the house, struggling to learn English. I commend you for what you do, you do fantastic work.
So I just wanted to say that kudos to the success, especially the one student with, prior to the pandemic and where they are now. But I also like to say how much we appreciate that you're thinking of the whole. It's the culture, it's caring about their families. It's giving an opportunity for that culture experience to be interchanged between the students and that really makes it important. Learning is critical, but also becoming a person that is respectful of each other and culturally knowledge is, is key. So thank you, thank you very much for that.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm impressed with the program. I've certainly learned a lot tonight from your presentation. I love to see the change in diversity in this community. I think that enriches all of our students. And I anticipate, or I'm assuming you anticipate that this will be a growing need as well. And so I hope you'll come back to the board and let us know how it's going and how we can support the program.
Absolutely, thank you. And I would like to give just a quick plug to our ENL teachers at the middle school and high school, Michelle Hall and Alex Omeninsky. They do a fantastic job at their level as well. And when I say that it's an ENL team, are the four of us, or the four of them behind me, plus the two that aren't here, because this was a focus on Janay, they, they communicate on a daily basis and they work together as, as a great team to service all students' needs. And that's a kudos to them. And it's also a kudo to Mr. McHugh, who's sitting over to my left because he's in direct communication with them on a regular basis as well, to make sure that they have the tools that they need to be successful with our students.
Just a, just a brief comment. It's easy for us to create policy and administrators to implement policies, but the real thanks goes to the staff. And you folks are the gateway to these children's experiences. And your positive attitude is very obvious. And for that, we really appreciate it. Like I said, you're doing the nuts and bolts of the work. So whatever you need, let us know in a timely manner and we'll stump for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Great presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Yabawa. Frank, can you hear us?
Frank is in a tropical island.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you for, for joining us. I forgot to mention you earlier because I didn't see you on the big screen, but now I do. On your tropical island there, so.
There you go.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to move on to approval of draft minutes from December the first. And Mr. Dunn was absent and Mrs. Skamursky was absent. So one, two, three, four. I don't think you have a. You don't have a.
What about Frank?
Right. Oh, Frank. So we have five, right? Yes. So we're good. So I need a motion to accept. Frank, the second, Joanne, all in favor?
Aye.
Fused. Abstaining. All right, thank you. Next, we're going to move on to board forum and I'll start with Frank.
Nope.
Michelle? Joanne? Jennifer? Dawn? Cheryl? All right. Next, we will move on to the public forum. Residents, students, employees and business representatives of the East Greenbush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district, other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or the superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and state for the record their name, address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitor's form is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the form for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are protected, are prohibited and will be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Is there anybody out there that would like to address the board?
Sorry, I can't see on that side over there.
All right. Nobody? All right, thank you. This time, we will move on to reports and presentations and I'll turn it over to our superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Welcome members of the community, administrative team and of course, our members of our Board of Education. Just want to give a brief overview of what is happening in the district educationally, but also in terms of our, our student participation and extracurricular activities, as well as some of the most recent implementation of protocols related to COVID-19. I'll start by saying that presentations such as we just experienced with our ENL program remind us that there is a lot of good educational work going on in the district. And as we proceed through this school district year, unit year, we're going to make a concerted effort at the board meetings and in our communication with our parents and our public to make sure that we don't lose sight of all the good work of our teachers, our support staff, our administrative team on the educational and co-curricular activities. One area that we've been extremely impressed by within the recent weeks is the fact that we've been able to offer in-person concerts at the middle school level. And then there was one the other night at the high school and there's another concert at the high school tomorrow evening. And while we could not offer general admission and open up those concerts to the public, we were able to permit parents and a small number of family members to attend those concerts, which was very well received. In addition, our music teachers did an excellent job at organizing the concert schedule in such a way that the groups that were performing could be staggered, audiences could be staggered. And we were met with a lot of cooperation and a lot of support from our families. Additionally, Mr. Goodwin, with the support of the board, made arrangements for an outside service that was very professionally done to stream the concert so that members of the family that were not able to attend due to social distancing were able to watch the concert. We received a number of email compliments regarding the quality of that live stream. And so, Mr. Goodwin, I want to thank you. I want to thank the vendor who provided that. But I also want to thank the parents for their understanding that, well, it wasn't a normal concert experience. It was a great concert experience, and we will continue to have those. Athletics. We are permitting our spectators to attend athletics. We are administering, implementing a capacity limit. So far, we have not met that capacity limit. Our high school gymnasium, when set up for basketball, can hold approximately, under normal circumstances, 1,200 people. So our capacity limit at 50% is 600. We had a game, a Friday night game, which is generally more well-attended by students than other games. And we were able to permit as many students that wanted to attend, to attend the game as well as family members. So that is going very, very well. One of the things that we will talk about in discussion items is some changes that the board has asked me to look at in the way that we provide information on our website, and also we communicate issues that were impacting the district regarding COVID-19. But overall, as we enter into the holiday season, as we enter into our well-deserved recess, where our students and our staff and our families, the status of the district is strong.
Thank you. All right, we have a couple of discussion items. You?
I think it's me, then Linda.
All right, so I'm going to turn it back over to Jeff to talk about the result title.
Yes, we've had some vacant positions in the business office, really since the beginning of the year. One of those positions, we're going to ask the board to support a change in the title of the position and the job description. There is no change in the impact of this position on the budget. Linda Wager, who oversees the business office, has collaborated with Marissa Cannon on a new job title and a new job description that we think will draw the right experience for those positions. I'll turn it over to Linda and Marissa.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. The principal account clerk position has been vacant since March of 2021. The minimum qualifications for the title principal account clerk include four years of maintaining financial accounts, two years of which need to be in a supervisory capacity. So when we've been posting, we've been unable to get the appropriate candidates. We're getting individuals applying with higher education degrees looking to work in a supervisory role. And this position requires no supervisory experience. Ms. Wager and I collaborated on a new job description and a title called Accounts Payable Associate. This job description and title define the current day job responsibilities of the position and have a minimum qualification of a high school diploma and four years of experience maintaining financial accounts and records. As Mr. Simon says, we're recommending that the Accounts Payable Associate be compensated at the same salary schedule as Principal Account Clerk, so it is budget neutral with no additional costs. And we do hope that this provides job description will allow us to attract the appropriate candidate pool.
Well, if the board was comfortable voting on that tonight, we didn't, we didn't know, you know, whether the board wanted to leave it as a discussion item or vote. If there were questions or more information that the board was looking for, you certainly could bring it to a future meeting. If the board was comfortable, they could vote tonight to approve the job, the job title and the job description.
Does anybody have any questions? I mean, it's a position that obviously is needed. It's a position we've been without for almost a year now. So Frank, do you have anything?
Let's vote.
Okay, I agree with Frank. So I will put this out to a motion. So John makes the motion. We vote. Can I have a second? Michelle, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
2022-2023 School Budget Board Perimeters.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mann. It's that time of year again where we start to put together the information that the board will need to review the budget. We started that process today, meeting with a couple of our administrators to present their budget requests. We anticipate over the next two weeks, we will be able to complete the meetings with the administrators and bring some information to the board. In years past, the last few years, we've asked the board to weigh in their concerns and questions or ideas that you may want us to incorporate either into the budget itself or the budget process. We will do our best to make sure that we work within the guidelines that the board has established for the development of next year's school budget. Just really just an open discussion of what the board would like to see, either in the budget itself or the process that we bring the board in terms of the budget information to the board.
I have a comment if we're ready for that. What I would, would ask, because I know there's going to be a lot of challenges coming into this year, is that we just, as we usually do, this is nothing new, is spend our money wisely. And that the implementation of the spending is transparent, accountable, and result-driven. So if there's any significant changes or requests within the budget, that any proposals for those changes be supported by a strong rationale of what the goal is, how to achieve it, and what is the desired outcome.
To piggyback off a little bit of what John says, we've always, in the last several years, been very transparent. And with our different meetings, with the different groups in the community, in school, outside of school, in our communities. So, you know, I just want to make sure that we're going to continue with that process as well. And I'll make sure that Mike sends out an email to everybody. So if you want to take some time to, you know, think about things that, you know, we can put it in an email and get it to, get it back to Jeff. And so. Anybody else on the side? Frank, anything?
Nope.
Okay.
Mark, just one idea that we had within our administrative team. When we have our budget workshops, we, we tend to have a lot of documents and information available for the public. But we thought it might be a good idea to highlight one area a little more detailed than what we may have. So one of the, one of the areas we thought the board might be interested in is what we pay in the general fund for special education. Also, the department, so maybe some, some more detailed information about special education, what goes into building the, the lines for special education and the budget, but also maybe our operations and maintenance department. So these are just, if you want to give me some feedback specifically on those ideas. You know that about, only about 40% of special education costs in our, in our nation, nation's schools are actually paid for by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which was the federal funds that were approved a long time ago to fund, to fully fund special education. And it is not fully funded by the federal government nor the state. It is a large portion of the local share of the budget. So we think it's something that, and it's important because it really helps in supporting our kids, and we have a really good special ed program. So we thought that that might make sense.
Excellent. Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Okay, under regular business, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education, the East Greenbush Central School District hereby approves the programs for resident children with disabilities. I need a motion to accept. Cheryl? Joanne, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I think that's everybody. All right, thank you. Moving along to committee reports, we will start with Marissa.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Quick update on the status of our vacant positions. We have three full-time teaching assistant positions open and two part-time teaching assistant positions open. We are still working to fill our Spanish position located at Gulf Middle School. We are working with Elevate K-12 to secure an appropriately certified candidate for the position. We have one food service helper open at Red Mill Elementary. We posted today now for the third time. Our most recent candidate declined the position to accept a position elsewhere with benefits. We have a cook position open at Columbia High School. Phyllis Sanford and I interviewed two qualified candidates today, and we're working on reference checks. We have two monitor positions open at the elementary level and three at the secondary level. And we have our 10-month nurse posting closing on December 19th. We posted in the Times Union last Sunday, and that resulted in three candidates, all who have the appropriate licensure. And Mark Noeth and I are holding interviews for automotive mechanic and bus drivers next Wednesday and Thursday, so December 22nd and December 23rd. Does anyone have any questions?
Marissa, are the TA positions, the part-time ones you mentioned, are those benefits available or?
One position has benefits. That's a five-hour TA position. The other one is a 3.5 hour, which would not include benefits.
Good. All right. It's Wager, Director of Business and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. On Monday, December 6th, we had a health insurance committee meeting. We had a guest from Amshire Associates, Mr. Chris Knopf, joined us to discuss some changes that are forthcoming as a result of Highmark purchasing Blue Shield. We don't expect there to be many changes or any changes in the medical part of it. However, our formulary for prescription is unique to KASIC, so there, there may be some changes there. We expect that there will be some positive changes as Blue Shield has 500,000 members where Highmark has 5 million members. So we expect there to be expanded purchasing power, which will have a positive result. This was just a general information to alert people to the fact that there will be some changes coming. We expect more information regarding specific formularies to come mid-January to February. And then KASIC will decide on a formulary that is most, that is closest right now to the custom formulary, which is the formulary for prescriptions that we've been transitioning all of our employees to. So we expect it to be as close to that custom formulary as possible. And then that will be effective for everyone starting July 1st of 2022. Are there any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
The education committee minutes from December 6th are attached. At that meeting, we had a discussion of our English Language Learners, which you heard all about this evening. And we also talked about an East Greenbush Central School District Toolkit for Culturally Responsive Teaching that was created this summer through summer curriculum writing that we talked about best ways to roll out, just to make sure we maximize that use. So we're looking at some professional development time where that can be introduced to all of our employees. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Nope.
Thank you, Jim.
Just briefly, we did have a meeting of our Committee for Global Education. I just received the minutes today, so I will get those to the Board of Education and to the committee. Last Tuesday, the committee reviewed the board's new goals and with the emphasis on diversity, equity, and inclusion embedded and highlighted within the goals, the committee was very, felt very supported to see that the board has identified diversity, equity, and inclusion as an important piece of the goals. Additionally, we had asked faculty and staff in each of our respective buildings to review the New York State DEI framework. That work is ongoing with principals facilitating staff discussions in each building. Through Mr. McHugh's efforts, some additional professional development has been provided this year through Questar BOCs, including presentations from Sandy Struck, who has done, I think today was the second or the third, third workshop. She has done a session on my cultural identity, considering other cultures, and today was building our culture. Those are being held at Belt Top Elementary School, but are open to the district. The Columbia High School is sponsoring a day called Cultural Diversity Day, which the goal is teaching of tolerance and understanding. Additionally, the committee recognized the importance of making sure that the work that it is doing and, and which is ongoing is part of our public communication program, and they appreciate the board's support for that. The board is aware that we have proposed starting after-school programs at the elementary school level. There was a posting that went out to all staff, not just teachers, any staff that has an interest or a hobby that they think would be of, of interest to the kids. We're in the process of collecting those employees that might be interested. And one of the ideas that we talked about with this committee was how do we make sure that the activities that we offer in our after-school programs are inclusive of the different backgrounds of our kids? And the staff is very excited about that, and that is an ongoing process to make sure that our after-school programs are reflective of all of our efforts to make sure that we are supporting the diverse needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, anybody got any questions for Jeff? No?
Nope.
Moving on to table motions, there are none. Under old business. Anybody? Old business? Nope. All right. So the consent agenda A through F. Any questions, concerns, comments?
Just a comment and a brief question. I was reading in there that the appendix D positions that are being supported in this, how are we with the appendix D appointments? Are all the appendix programs filled now?
I think we're close. I'm going to ask Mr. Cannon.
Good question, Mr. Dunn. We have probably about, I would say approximately five positions that aren't filled currently. Three of those are located at the elementary school level. There are coding clubs. And we also have Frisbee Club and I believe Interact Club at the secondary level. I spoke with Mrs. Taylor several days ago. We're actually going to reconvene the appendix D committee at the beginning of the year. So when everyone returns after January 3rd, and we're going to talk about what's worked during this new interview process, what hasn't worked, and then also have a discussion around those clubs that aren't filled.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so I will need a motion to approve the consent agenda A through F. John? John, Jennifer, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, we do have one addendum, a contract. With the Amazing Grace Transportation.
Thank you. We have two students that are, two of our students that are considered homeless and are residing in Schenectady. One intends golf and the other high school. Currently, we don't have the staffing to transport those students back and forth. So this is a contract. We issued a bid. We had two, two bids that we received from the Amazing Grace Transportation. And the Reja Group, which is the A-plus Mediterranean. The low bidder was Amazing Grace at three hundred and eighty dollars per run. Mr. Buno asked for clarification on per run and that is per day. So it would be three hundred and eighty dollars per day.
You could.
Are there any questions?
Mrs. Wager?
Yeah.
Just a quick question. I would assume that all drivers are subject to background checks.
Yes, they are.
I had a similar question, like they have to follow all the rules and protocols that. That are, are bus drivers and routes take correct, so.
They follow all of those rules and their vehicles are also inspected by our, our staff.
And if the regular driver is out, are we notified that a substitute is going to be there?
Mr. Noeth would be notified, yes.
Thank you.
Let's see, you want to vote on that tonight?
I need a, yeah, I need a vote on that.
And Linda, how many people responded when that was the lowest bidder?
Two. We received two bids. The results are there. The Amazing Grace is three eighty dollars per. For answer. Per day.
I just.
Mending the Amazing Grace.
I just have one question, I guess. So when this was put out for bid and they had to respond back, not only with cost. But do they have to respond back with? Any type of documentation on their buses being inspected or their fleet or?
That is all part of the bid. When the bid goes out, that's all included in the bid, so they know exactly. What they are agreeing to. And as a result of this, our, our attorneys are working on a contract. That will spell everything out again in the contract and be signed by both us and Amazing Grace.
And this, this would be just for the remaining of this current school year?
Right now, it would be, yes, this, this bid covers the remainder of this school year. The situation may change and we may have to have another bid next year. But we were able to enter into an emergency contract with them for thirty days and then we're required to bid it out.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I guess, you know, the cost is so high. Is there other options that, you know, we can consider? Okay.
There really aren't because of the shortage, the shortages of drivers in our district and in all districts. Some of the private vendors are also, many of the private vendors are also experiencing the same shortage of licensed drivers and these two vendors happen to be. Able to bid on the contract, but there really isn't, there aren't really a lot of options out there which drives the price up.
Yeah. Thank you.
We recently had to have a contract that was not at the level that we needed to bid it. But it was for another student and it turned out that then that student was able to come into one of our Questar BOSIs programs. So we no longer needed to have the contract with them. So things may change, but we are required to transport these students.
One thing that could change is their residency situation as well. They could become residents of another district. Right now, under the McKinney-Vento federal law, they are, they are still residents of our district. And they have the option to be transported into our district until such time as that residency situation is settled. So it could be a short-term, it could be a more long-term arrangement.
So I will need a, a motion to accept this contract. Joanne, Michelle, all in favor?
Thank you.
That's everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business.
So Mark, if I can just take a, a second. I am aware of a recent family that unfortunately has lost their mom. And it came to me, to my mind when I thought about this is I would like to. Do something as a school community for these children that lose a parent or guardian during their school years. And so I would like the, the, the. School and the Board of Education to maybe consider doing something, maybe a memorial tree where there's a place where these students know. That the school district and, and the community itself. Are behind them and support them during their grieving process and that their, their parent and their guardian meant something for us too and we miss them. So, you know, it doesn't have to be anything really significant, but something that's really personal to the student. So if we could maybe put that on a future. Idea, it might even be something that needs to be considered during the budget, but I also think the PTOs would probably be interested perhaps. Maybe this education foundation. So we could get funding from other places if we want to consider something to do for. Students that really have had such a huge loss during the year.
Thank you, Michelle. I did, after receiving Mrs. Samersky's email, I did connect with, through Mr. McHugh and I am aware of the two students who lost their parents. And I know that our social workers and our administrators have been intervening and working with those families, so we can follow up on it. But if the board. Would like to do something formally to commemorate that loss, that's certainly something the district. Put in place if the board supported it.
Yeah, I saw the email he sent to the board, Michelle, and I, I do agree and I think that's a good idea. I know of one of the families, my daughter was friendly with one of. Daughter who lost her mom as well. And I think some gesture from the school community would be a great idea.
Yeah, and, and you know, I was just thinking like a tree or an area in one of our facilities where these kids could go to memory. To be able to have a memory and, and, you know, feeling like they're a little bit exclusive. And, and again, it's not just for these children, it's for. The children in the future, unfortunately, and, and the ones in the past to kind of have that memory, maybe a brick or something where we can. Give them a little bit of, you know, support that lasts for a while.
If, if anybody has any ideas that they would like, you know, to consider, look at your email to, to Jeff. And then we can readdress it as a board. You know, we do have the, the monument currently at the library. With the bricks for students of the district that had, that have passed away. So, you know, we may. Think about that area as well and, and, and open it up to like, you know, your. You know, what you're talking about, Michelle, and, and, you know, touch base with the library and, and, you know, see what they're. They've always been supportive of, you know, giving us that area up there in the bench and stuff and Rotary Club played a big part in that as well, so. All right, yeah, definitely.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, yeah, Mark. I, I, yeah, absolutely. And Michelle's point, she's right on, right on point. It's very sad. It's very sad what these kids are going through. However, I'm very hesitant when it comes to the parents of the kids. While, as I said, it is very, very unfortunate and very sad. Strategically, we have to be quite careful not to implement something that becomes very unsustainable because. We have a relationship with the kids. The kids are in the school district. And I'll, I'd love to hear maybe Jeff tell us, what is our current policy? For instance. If a kid in the school district tests positive. What are we doing for such, such kids? What is currently in place as the policy? While it is very sad and as I said, we sympathize and empathize with families, kids like that. But I'm quite hesitant because. The parents, the parents, the parents of the kids in the school district. But we are careful not to institute anything for the parents because most of the board. And the school have no formal relationship with the parents. You know, it's not like. There were athletes in the school district and for some reason they are past and we want to remember them. And we have had others die unfortunately since two thousand and twenty, since the pandemic broke and nothing has been done to this point, so. We, we want to be quite careful while the idea from Michelle, as I said, is very laudable. It makes. All the sense in the world to do something for the kids, but I'm much interested in what the school district itself. Representing the board is currently doing as part of this process protocol for these kids that have lost loved ones.
I'll have to do a little research in terms of our practices. I don't know, I don't think we have a written policy or at the board policy level regarding how the district. Handles these types of activities. We have supported individual efforts of families and friends. In the past who have proposed to us a tree planting or a bench. When a, when a student has died or when a beloved member of the community has died, so. If you give me a little time, I'll look at the policies that we have, whether they fit or not. Maybe there's some sample policies. I know. It's a similar issue, but obviously more, more sensitive. With naming policies, when, for example, when you name facilities after people, there is often a need to have a policy so that. Consistency and the sustainability, as you said, is there. And I will look into it a little bit and I'll report back to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
All right, two things that I have under new business and one Jeff had alluded to in an email that he, that he sent the board was. You know, currently now when we have COVID positives, you know, we're, we're sending out letters and we're making these notifications. And it's very time-consuming and it's a lot of work. And I'd like to see us follow a, a model that Questar has started and that is making it all web-based. So instead of doing the, the daily letters and, and, and that time-consuming, we now will shift this to, to the website. So anybody in the community, parents, everybody can go look to the website. Jeff has spoken to Mark Adam about creating, you know, a space for this. I think it'll be easier. On Jeff and his team that have to do this, okay, less time-consuming and we are still getting the information out. To the school community. And we're just making it, you know, a one-stop shop, making its own page so that we're not. I know one thing Mike was concerned about is we don't want it to be on our, you know, as soon as you click on our website, you know, the doom and gloom. If having a link off of that so that, you know, we, you know, this thing is, is, is really taking its toll on a lot of us, so. Separate link off of our page, daily stats or however we want to work it. And go that route and maybe when we come back from. The winter break, we can maybe have that be our transition point. Would it, is that?
Mr. Adam has indicated he would be ready to make that shift. Maybe even before the holidays, because I had suggested the holiday be a point, but I think he's ready to go. I asked him to wait until we had this conversation, but. He wanted to send out a communication that basically says the information is still going to be there. We're going to have it available differently on a separate webpage. It will be with all the other COVID-related information. And Mark, you just articulated that. We want to make sure that this information is still being provided, but again, not to overshadow our, our homepage. Which will leave space for other educational and other important matters. So Mark has that letter all ready to go and it fits with exactly what you just described. So I think we will be ready to go within, within a couple of days.
Hey, I, I, and I'm good with that. If he's ready, you know, I said after the winter break to give him time, but if he's. Ready to execute, then.
It is a lot of logistical work. To make sure that that information is flowing accurately to Mark. Timing varies every day depending on when we hear about confirmed cases. It's a lot of work, so it would be, it would not only be good for. The community to receive this information differently, it would be more efficient for the district.
Anybody have any questions, concerns, comments?
It sounds like it would really streamline the process along with not bogging down some of the good things that are happening that we want to highlight. So if I understand correctly, we would go to the homepage and there would just be a link there to COVID information.
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent idea. Excellent.
I appreciate the board bringing it forward.
Does anybody have any concerns about implementing it right away? Everybody's good with that?
I think we need to keep the focus on what we're doing. We are living with COVID. I don't want to hear about how many cases we have every day. It's here, it's not going anywhere. We need to show the community that we are moving forward.
Perfect.
One hundred percent.
Very good. Thank you all. Appreciate that.
And the only other thing, Jeff, is can you give us a, maybe just a quick update? So we have this new mask mandate. Has that affected for this now until January eighteenth? Is there any change to any of our school? What we were doing in the schools or?
Not at this point, but there may be. The, the governor issued a memorandum with the Department of Health last Friday. Portions of that memorandum relate to. Mask breaks for students. There's been some conflicting information. There was another communication that came from the governor that said it was a local determination through the county, but then the state education department has indicated through Questar. That there are, mask breaks are not permitted. So we talked about it at our county meeting today, but the principals weren't all there. The director wasn't there, so. Until such time as we have clarity, we're going to keep our current practices in place, which is we do permit. Mask breaks, most particularly at the elementary school level during snack and at various times that, that may become more restrictive and we just don't know how much more restrictive. But, but we're looking at it. We're not going to make a change or announce a change until we have that clarity back.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, anybody else? New business? All right, thank you. Moving on to public forum number two. Anybody? All right, board forum number two. Cheryl? John? Frank?
No.
Jennifer? Joanne, Michelle? I'm good as well. I believe we do need an executive session.
Yes.
So I need a motion to go into executive session.
Before you, before you go, I just want to make sure that we under, we communicate with Frank. Are we going to be able to send? Mr. Yabo a separate link for the executive session or should we remain in here to have the executive session? I don't, we don't want to lose Frank. We're going to go to the conference room. Okay, so Frank, we're going to stay on this connection. I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose him in the process.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll need a motion to go into executive session. John? Michelle, all in favor? I do not see us coming back to any regular business, so thank you, everybody for coming. We'll see you next year. Happy holidays and, and enjoy these next couple of days in the schools. Thank you.